Chair, we're ready for you.
Thank you. I will call the September 4th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Will everyone please stand and will Commissioner Langford lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join us in suiting our great flag by putting your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Langford. All right, staff, roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
Okay, consent items. Item number one, the minutes of August 21st, 2025. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes from August 21st, 2025? See none? Thank you. Call for a motion and a second to approve. You know what, actually, I'll make the motion to approve with the two comments that trickled in over the last week or so. Oh, no, no, no. I cannot because I was not here.
I'm happy to make, I'm happy to make the motion. I'll make the motion to approve with the two comments that trickled in over the last week.
I'll second.
Got it.
The motion carries 5-0 with Chair Harris and Commissioner Rosin abstaining.
Okay, next item, public comments. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda tonight, but are generally in the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. All right, see none? Move on. Request for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
There are no requests for continuances tonight.
Thank you. All right, public hearing items. Item number two, Snug Harbor Surf Park. It's PA 2024-0069. The site location is 3100 Irvine Avenue, and I believe we have a recusal?
Yes, Chair Harris, I'll be recusing myself on this item because the underlying parcel is owned in part by my employer.
Thank you. Jocelyn.
Thank you, Chair Harris. Commissioners, my name is Jocelyn Perez. I am the planner assigned to this request to construct and operate the Snug Harbor Surf Park located at 3100 Irvine Avenue. The project site is located within the northern portion of the city. It is the center portion of the Newport Beach Golf Course. The Newport Beach Golf Course is in proximity of John Wayne Airport, and it is somewhat unique in the sense that it occurs over multiple properties and in three distinct land areas, the northern, central, and southern portion. Tonight's application is strictly for the central portion. There will be, there's no action being taken on the southern portion this evening. This is only for the central portion. The project site is zoned Santa Ana Heights, open space and recreation. It has a general plan land use designation of parks and recreation. Surrounding land uses are dynamic with residential in that brown and cream color and commercial in that orange color along birch. There is fire station number seven abutting the project site, open space by the back bay. If you'll notice, there are two significant areas where there is no shading. Those areas are outside of the city limits and they are within the county of Orange. The existing site, the project site, is that central portion of the Newport Beach Golf Course. So I want to highlight that the Newport Beach Golf Course is a private golf course. It is not owned or operated by the city. It has 18 holes over multiple properties, features a driving range, a pro shop, a restaurant and bar, and it operates pursuant to use permit 1594, which will remain in effect if the project is approved. The proposed project is to construct a surfing lagoon, which would feature two 5 million gallon basins, to be surrounded by viewing areas, pools, lighting, and landscaping, and to construct an amenity clubhouse building that would be three stories and approximately 15 feet tall above the average existing grade and 50,000 square feet in area. The first floor would feature a lobby, surf academy, surf shop, restaurant, bar, and lockers. The second floor would feature fitness area, yoga, locker rooms, and a members lounge. And the third floor would feature admin offices, VIP suites, and a music recording studio. The basement level would feature golf cart storage, surfboard storage, facility storage, and mechanical equipment. Also proposed is an athlete accommodations building, which would be two stories tall or approximately 40 feet above the average existing grade with a square footage of approximately 9,400 square feet and would feature 20 rooms. The project also proposes ancillary structures and support facilities, including freestanding restrooms, retaining walls, a trash enclosure, utility upgrades, driveway relocation, and roadway striping, 351 parking spaces and two surface lots with solar panel covers. Also in the request is the request for alcohol with a type 47 on sale eating place, a 58 caterer license, and a 68 portable bar. I'm going to show you on the site plan where these different components occur, starting with the surfing lagoons, the wave making equipment and heating equipment, the two driveways to access the site, the clubhouse, the visitor, the athlete accommodations building, retaining walls, parking areas, the trash enclosure. To implement the project as proposed, the project requires a general plan amendment to increase the development intensity of anomaly 58 by 39,772 square feet, a major site development review to construct a non-residential building larger than 20,000 square feet, a conditional use permit to authorize the outdoor commercial recreation use to authorize the alcohol sales, establish the parking rate, and allow for the construction of a building taller than 18 feet, a modification permit to authorize the construction of retaining walls that are taller than eight feet from finished grade, and environmental impact report. I'm going to cover each of those approvals in more depth over my next few slides. For the general plan amendment, it's, like I said, it's required to increase the development limit of anomaly 58. The project would construct approximately 79,000 square feet. However, approximately 19,000 square feet of that is excluded as incidental building areas consistent with land use table one of the general, the land use element of the general plan for properties designated as parks and recreation. So table LU1 provides examples of areas that are exempt, such as maintenance and equipment sheds, supply storage areas, freestanding restrooms, and support facilities for golf. The PR designation applies to properties that are used for either public or private recreational uses. Permitted uses include parks, both active and passive. So this project is consistent with the PR land use category, but it requires a general plan amendment to increase the development intensity of anomaly 58. There are no step findings to approve a general plan amendment, but the project is consistent with 76 general plan policies. That full analysis is available as exhibit F of the draft resolution. The project was analyzed for consistency with green light and no green light vote is required. That full analysis is available in the staff report on handwritten page 11. As part of the general plan amendment, tribal consultation is required. Two tribes requested consultation and monitoring, the Gabrielino Tongba Indians of California and the Gabrielino Band of Mission Indians Keech Nation. The city incorporated mitigation measures requested by the tribes into the mitigation monitoring reporting program. Next, the site development review, which is required because the project proposes a non-residential building larger than 20,000 square feet. And so the point of a major site development review is to ensure that there's consistency with the general plan, it's allowed within the zoning district and the specific plan, and that the project respects the physical environment charis characteristics of the site, that there's safe circulation, high-quality development. It encourages the maintenance of community identity, minimizes undesirable visual impacts, and protects significant public views. This is a rendering of the clubhouse, and I've included this to demonstrate the architectural style of the building. So speaking on the consistency of the project with the general plan and the zoning, Santa Ana Heights Open Space and Recreation allows for commercial recreation with approval of a conditional use permit. The architecture is compatible with the design guidelines provided in the Santa Ana Heights specific plan as it uses wood, whites, and earth tones. The building placement on the site plan is specific as it is intended to prevent noise from traveling from the surf lagoon to the residential uses across Irvine Avenue. And the project incorporates Brisbane box trees, also consistent with the Santa Ana Heights specific plan. Before you now is a visual of how the project will facilitate the continuation of the Newport Beach Golf Course during construction as the golf cart path is shown in that purple color. And while this is a, the temporary configuration, something similar to this will be incorporated into the final design so golf can continue on the northern portion of the Newport Beach Golf Course and the southern portion. Next, the conditional use permit. A conditional use permit is required to authorize the commercial recreation use, to authorize the alcohol sales, to establish the parking rate, and allow the construction of a building taller than 18 feet. Some of the findings required for a conditional use permit I covered in the site development review, such as allowed within the zoning district and the general plan. So I'm going to focus on the site's compatibility and suitability. So first, the alcohol sales. The applicants requested a type 47 on sale general eating place, a type 58, and a type 68. They are not proposing any live entertainment, no dancing, and no late hours as part of their regular business operations. The Newport Beach Police Department has reviewed the project and has no objections subject to the appropriate conditions, which have been included in the draft resolution. If there are any changes to the proposed operational characteristics, such as late hours, adding entertainment, or changing the alcohol license, a subsequent use permit and an operator's license would be required. Next, traffic. The table in blue summarizes the existing trips for the golf course. The existing golf course generates 1,810 daily trips with 136 during the AM peak hour and 165 during the PM peak hour. The proposed project generates 1,996 trips with 63 in the AM peak hour and 155 in the PM peak hour. This represents an increase of 186 net new average daily trips. This is under the 300 trip threshold in our traffic phasing ordinance, which would require a traffic impact analysis. And the trip generation was put together by Gibson Transportation based on operational data from Wave Garden, the manufacturer of the wave making equipment and an operator of wave pools, along with ITE trip generation rates. The trip generation was reviewed and accepted by the city traffic engineer. With regards to parking, taking the similar anticipated visitors per day, of the 1,400 expected visitors per day, modeling estimates that there will be a maximum of 388 onsite at any given time. The parking analysis assumes that there are two visitors per vehicle, so the parking requirement for visitors is 194 spaces. The project will employ 70 employees. However, only 35 employees are estimated to be onsite at any given time. Therefore, the parking requirement for employees is 35 spaces. And then the parking analysis uses ITE estimates for the remaining holes of golf, and the parking requirement for golf is 95 spaces. So the total parking requirement for this project is 324 spaces with 351 spaces provided. And while the project is not using valet to achieve their parking requirement, they do have valet proposed to provide additional spaces in the event it's needed, and a final parking management plan is subject to review and acceptance by the city traffic engineer. All right, so compatibility, there's the water usage of the surf park. The city reviewed the applicant's estimates for how much the surf park, how much water the surf park would use, and accepted the estimates and determined that the city has adequate supply to accommodate the project. There will be biannual draining of the basins for maintenance, which will be coordinated with the Costa Mesa sanitation district to ensure that there's sewer capacity and capacity to capture into county recycling and reuse programs. The project proposes 12 permitted special events per year, which will require special events permits from the city. And the project will have temporary construction impacts as project construction is anticipated to take 18 months and it's a large project. Therefore, a construction management plan will be, need to be reviewed and accepted by the community development director and the city traffic engineer prior to the issuance of building permits. Building height, so in the Santa Ana Heights specific plan, open space and recreation, to authorize the construction of any building over 18 feet in height, a conditional use permit is required. This project proposes one building at 50 feet above average existing grade and one building at 40 feet above average existing grade. This is compatible with the surrounding development. As seen on the left, there are multi-story office buildings. And while not visible in this photo, there is a medical office building at 3300 Irvine Avenue that's, that once remodeled will be over 40 feet tall. So it's consistent with the surrounding development. Speaking on noise, the draft EIR estimated construction noise and operational noise. It used eight locations to establish a baseline and then anticipated the noise from all the project components, which I have in that table on the left. So equipment, traffic, trash pickup, spectators, surfers, all of that is factored into the analysis, and that's for both daytime and evening noise levels. And the draft environmental impact report found that there were no significant impacts for noise, and all activities must comply with the extensive list of requirements for noise within the Newport Beach municipal code. I'd like to talk next about the modification permit. The project uses a variety of retaining walls to create the building pad. And while the majority comply with the eight-foot above finish grade height limit, the retaining walls in yellow are over that. And so I've highlighted the delhi channel there to show that these retaining walls are typically set back from Irvine Avenue. We have walls that are approximately 10 feet above finish grade, 12, 16, and 13. Here are the views of those retaining walls. This is taken from the intersection of Mesa Drive and Irvine Avenue, and it's looking at the retaining wall where it would be about 13 feet above the finish grade with the 10 feet above finish grade up Mesa Drive. And I've used this vantage point because I want to demonstrate what these retaining walls would look like at their worst-case scenario. Here's a view taken from near the Jetty Commercial Center of those retaining walls, and I want to point out that retaining walls are pretty common within this area of the city. The ranch shopping center just across the street has an elevated building pad. There's retaining walls slightly north of the project site, so these retaining walls shouldn't appear out of place with surrounding development. Speaking on the environmental review portion of this project, all projects require review under CEQA. Typically, we see projects that are categorically exempt. However, this project required the preparation of an environmental impact report. An EIR is intended to disclose the environmental impacts of a project and identify mitigation that can help make the project less than significant. It does not analyze if a project is good or bad. Here's the process for the EIR. Back in November of 2024, we issued a notice of preparation and invited the community to comment on what topics they'd like studied within the EIR. On the 20th, we, on November 20th, 2024, we held a scoping meeting where we once again solicited comments from the community on what they would like studied within the EIR. Those comments were taken and used to help craft the draft environmental impact report along with all of the CEQA guidelines for what must be studied in an EIR. The draft EIR was released for a 45-day public comment period in May of 2025, and that ran through July 7th of 2025. We had that study session on July 19th, 2025. During the public comment period, we received 126 comments on the draft environmental impact report. Those all have been catalogued and responded to in that response to comments. And so that final arrow there that says the final EIR, that includes an introduction, the response to comments, any revisions that were necessary to the draft environmental impact report in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. We have both the response to comments and the MMRP available attached to the staff report, so every comment that was received is responded to. So the content of the draft EIR, these are the environmental topics that were studied. On the left, we have topics where the project had absolutely no impact on them. In the center there, we have the topics where the project had a less-than-significant impact. And on the right, we have the environmental topics where there was the potential for a significant impact. However, it was mitigated to a less-than-significant level with the inclusion of mitigation measures. There were no significant unavoidable impacts identified as part of this project. A little bit about the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. As I mentioned, there were environmental topics that required mitigation. So just summarizing that they were in biological resources, cultural, paleo, and tribal. So we've included mitigation measures such as pre-construction surveys and monitoring during construction to mitigate to a less-than-significant impact level. The project is within the notification area of John Wayne Airport, and because it contains a general plan amendment, it requires review by the Airport Land Use Commission. The project site is within the 60 and 65 CNEL noise contours. The project site's trisected by safety zones two, four, and six. The city referred the project to ALUC in June for their review. ALUC found the project inconsistent with their airport environs land use plan on August 7th. However, city council is considering issuing a notice of intent to override at the September 9th council meeting. However, I want to mention that there's no action being taken on the project at that September 9th meeting. Council will only be considering issuing a notice of intent to override ALUC. And the plant, and I want to highlight that the planning commissioners here this evening, you do not have to recommend approval of this project simply because there is a public hearing notice for the intent to override. This slide highlights some of the conditions of approval of this project. There are over 145 conditions of approval for this project. So some of the ones that I'd like to highlight here include, the project has to comply with all the mitigation measures in the MMRP, storage areas that facilitate future, the continuation of golf. They can't be converted into, say, a restaurant or more lounge without an additional general plan amendment. 324 parking spaces must always be required, and that includes 95 for golf users. Operation of the outdoor speakers shall cease by 10:00 PM for noise purposes. And for any special events, there will be quarterly monitoring that must be submitted to the community development department for review. I've received upwards of 100 letters of correspondence, some in support of the project, some in opposition of the project. I've tried to tease out some of the top concerns raised and provide a guide for where these concerns have actually been responded to, whether in the draft environmental impact report or in the response to comments. There was also a concern about compatibility with some of the proposed uses and the parks and recreation general plan land use category. However, these uses are ancillary to the surfing lagoon and therefore allowed under parks and recreation. And also, a letter was received from the airport regarding inconsistency with their airport land use. However, staff believes that the occupancies are consistent with the Caltrans Airport handbook. And also, a letter was received by Mr. Mosher with a number of edits to the resolution that will be addressed and the resolution will be cleaned up prior to signing. So staff's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution recommending that the city council take the following actions. To certify the environmental impact report and approve the general plan amendment, site development review, conditional use permit, and modification permit filed as PA 2024-0069. Next steps are for the council to consider issuing that notice of intent to override ALUC, and that would be if the commissioners this evening do make that recommendation to council, favorable recommendation to council, and then also for city council on the 28th to consider overriding ALUC and certifying the EIR and approving the project. That concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. We also have quite a few staff members that are available for questions. The, the EIR was prepared by a city consultant, EPD. They're available for questions for, on any topics within the EIR. And we have a representative of the applicant here, Shawna Schaffner, who also has a presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Perez.
All right, Commissioners, bringing up any questions for staff? Anyone want to kick it off? Commissioner Reed?
I'll start. Just one question for you on the modification permit of the eight-foot walls. Is there any planting proposed on the sections that are, that go above eight feet? I think you said they go up to 16 feet at this point.
There is landscaping proposed to help soften and sit in those.
Just sit in front of it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kazan?
On the CUP, you've mentioned, I just want to clarify on the parking rate, that that's a, it's a parking ratio. It's not necessarily a dollar amount that is paid for parking, that it is free parking, and it's, I think the intent was that it's more of a parking ratio.
Correct. That is, we are not directing the applicant to charge for parking. It is simply the number of spaces required to support the use.
Go ahead. Commissioner Rosin?
This might be better to be asking the applicant, but could you briefly let us know what the status of the lease on the property is?
I'll have the applicant respond to that one.
Yeah, thank you.
On the overhead, we had some questions during the study session on the route for carts to holes three through eight. You showed a green line. Is that, is that out on Irvine Avenue proposed, or is it inside the walls? Can you elaborate on that location?
The golf cart path meanders where some of it is located on the project site, and then it does cross Mesa Drive there.
But that's within, okay. So I'm looking under, it's underneath the flood channel, but it's not between the, it's inside the retaining wall? Is that correct?
I'll go ahead.
Or maybe I can ask the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay. We also, I had questions on the, some of the viewing angles and lines along Mesa Drive. Were there any changes made? I mean, at the end of the day, it was kind of, just seemed with the grade changes, it went high and seemed a little bit intense.
No changes were made.
For parking, have we received an allocation, maybe this is to the applicant as well, on where the proposed, you know, employee golf, are they distinguished on the site for now, or is that to be determined?
I'll let the applicant speak to that one further.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jocelyn. Okay, Commissioners, report any ex parte communication, please. Commissioner Reed will start down there. Commissioner Reed will start down there.
Both applicant and the applicant's consultant.
I met with the applicant and the applicant's representative.
I met with the applicant and the applicant's representative.
I met with the applicant and the representative. I also talked to some, a representative of the against. It was kind of my doing.
I had a conversation with the applicant and the applicant's consultant.
Conversations with the applicant and their representatives.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Does the applicant want to make a presentation or comment? Ms. Schaffner?
Good evening, Chair Harris, members of the commission. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, and I represent the Snug Harbor Surf Project tonight. This project was presented at the Planning Commission during a study session on June 19th, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to provide this presentation. Before I get started, I would like to thank city staff for their hard work. We worked with so many different city staff members, but I really want to commend Jocelyn Perez for her diligent efforts with all of her colleagues across the many divisions. She really had to quarterback the city team, and she did a great job. I would propose that I do my presentation, and then I will make sure that I answer the questions that you guys just raised, if that's okay with you? Great, thank you. Okay, so the vision of the project is to provide an innovative, world-class, full-service, year-round, outdoor recreational use to serve local residents, athletes, and visitors. The project will increase access to surf at all levels, from beginners to experts, flattening the learning curve. The project will facilitate continued golf operations and will maintain consistency with the Santa Ana Heights specific plan, which allows outdoor commercial recreation as a permitted use. The project will maximize the use of solar energy on-site, expand the city's tourism economy, transient occupancy tax, and importantly, will provide safety and consistency in surf conditions that are not available in nature. The surf park features two lagoons that accommodate a maximum of 72 surfers with an average capacity of 42. Surfers can choose their desired session based on experience level, wave direction, and wave type. A control tower will be located on the third floor of the clubhouse to direct lifeguard operations with an average of eight lifeguards positioned around the lagoons and a response time of approximately 25 seconds. The surf park will have an online reservation system based on hourly time slots and will be open to the public. The amenities include a surf academy, surf shop, coffee shop, and restaurant, wetsuit storage, other ancillary uses, and 20 overnight athlete accommodations. The project, as I said, will facilitate continued golf operation, have golfer parking, a starter, and dedicated golf cart storage within the basement level of the clubhouse building. The project has a peak parking demand of 289 spaces, includes a valet parking plan with up to 411 parking spaces for a surplus of 122 parking spaces. As Jocelyn indicated, the project application includes a general plan amendment to increase the square footage, a major site development review permit for a building over 20,000 square feet, a conditional use permit, and a modification permit to increase the retaining wall heights, and an environmental impact report was prepared. The aesthetic is understated to seamlessly blend with and enhance the cultural and coastal environment of Newport Beach. The project will feature wood siding with vertical and horizontal elements, exposed mass timber, natural stone landscape walls to connect with nature, and will include architectural concrete, dark metal, and bronze accents, cable railings, and glazing throughout. The design emphasizes a seamless indoor-outdoor flow, allowing visitors to connect with the outside. Focusing specifically on the facade, the exterior will be clad in wood, providing an elevated experience. The center of the building is open with wood detail and glazing to create a dramatic sense of arrival. The top floor is slightly set back, and the windows are inset to break up the massing, and the building will be a backdrop to the verdant layered landscaping that will feature heavily in front of the building and throughout the parking areas. Here is a rendering. This is roughly above Irvine Ranch Market. The building will be set back over 430 feet from the Irvine and Mesa intersection. In this view, you can see landscaped geogrid walls, solar canopies in the parking area, the clubhouse building in the middle of the image, and existing commercial development in the background. Here is a view of the existing driveway along Irvine Avenue. And here is a view from Mesa close to the Irvine intersection. Here you can see the proposed geogrid walls, which are heavily planted. And here is the new access from Mesa Drive. This is proposed to be right-in and right-out only. Here's a view of the athlete accommodations further east on Mesa Drive. Just for context, here's the existing condition. Every effort has been made to minimize the use of retaining walls and to limit wall heights where retaining walls are required. A mechanically stabilized earth wall or a geogrid wall is proposed on the site as shown in yellow and green highlighting. The wall ranges from zero feet to 16 feet in height. The area of green highlighting depicts the highest portions of the wall. This is necessary particularly along the Santa Ana Delhi Channel, where there's a large grade differential, and where we are proposing a golf cart path at the bottom of the wall to create enough room. And here is another image depicting the geogrid wall. We're proposing landscaping, again, on the wall to really soften the appearance of the wall. In addition to the placement of the golf cart storage at the bottom, or excuse me, the golf cart path at the bottom of the wall, the wall is proposed so that the grading balances on-site, and there won't be any export of earth from the site. I'd like to touch on golf. While the project will remove the driving range and three holes of golf, the surf project is committed to facilitating ongoing golf operation. The project provides 90-plus parking spaces for golf use. Those would be proposed in the Irvine Avenue parking lot for ease of access. Additionally, we have golf cart storage in the clubhouse and a starter. And here is the plan that Jocelyn showed. The pink path would be located at the bottom of the retaining wall in between the Delhi Channel and the parking lot to provide golf cart access. And then it would go along the Mesa intersection as it currently does for crossing Mesa. The tunnel, which is in place today, will remain with no changes. I do want to touch on airport compatibility briefly. It was addressed in the EIR. There's a technical study covering this topic. But in context of the Airport Land Use Commission's inconsistency finding, I think it's important to touch on it tonight. The site is divided into three separate zones. Zone two, shown in red, which is the most restrictive zone, zone four, and then zone six, circled in green. You will note that the existing improvements on the site, including the driving range, the restaurant, pro shop, are all contained within zone two. This project was purposely designed to move the most intense uses out of zone two and into safety zone six, which allow the most flexibility in terms of occupancy. So here's the site plan overlaid on the safety zones. You can see the clubhouse is in zone six. Overnight accommodations in zone four. The only uses in zone two are a portion of the surf lagoon, parking, and maintenance areas. Let's see. So the occupancy for all zones will comply with the safety zone intensity criteria. I think Jocelyn covered traffic really well in terms of existing trips, over 1,800. New trips are over 1,900. There's a net increase of 186 trips with actually a reduction in the AM and PM peak hours. There are some additional issues that I want to touch on, which include noise, energy, and water. Related to noise, WaveGarden technology is the quietest on the market. It uses electromechanical levers and motors housed in enclosed modules to generate approximately 45 decibels of sound at a distance of 65 feet. So the predominant sound is that of breaking waves. The EIR included a detailed noise study, which analyzes the proposed noise levels against the ambient condition and concluded there will be no noise impacts. There are several other technologies used in surf lagoons, including the Palm Springs Surf Club, which utilizes the SurfLock technology, which is a pneumatic system where compressed air drives pistons downward, displacing water and creating sharp percussive sounds. This was especially exacerbated in Palm Springs, where the cooling systems required open doors for ventilation, and it created a very loud environment. WaveGarden is a completely different technology. It is not pneumatic, and we will not have that noise issue here. Oh, apologies. On the topic of energy, WaveGarden is the most efficient technology on the market. Modular paddles push water out, creating the wave, and inertia carries water back, providing regenerative energy, kind of similar to regenerative braking if you've been in an electric car. The project includes the use of solar canopies in the parking lot, which will generate nearly half the energy required for wave making and water circulation. On the topic of water, the project includes multi-stage filtration to remove particles, provide disinfection, and eliminate microorganisms. The project is anticipated to use approximately 28 million gallons annually. Of that, 15 million gallons would be returned to the Orange County Water District via the groundwater replenishment system. For comparison, an 18-hole golf course uses approximately 150 to 200 million gallons per year. For three holes, that would be 25 to 33 million gallons, which is similar to the proposed water use. Our outreach efforts have been underway for over a year, and they have been exhaustive. The team has had more than 150 meetings, including presentations, one-on-one meetings. These meetings really focused on outreach with Mesa Drive neighbors, citywide community members, and affinity groups. The team has met with all Newport Mesa Unified School District, high school, surf, and golf coaches, the junior guard, nonprofit groups, and surf organizations. We maintain an active website, social media, email, and the project has been featured across local media. The community benefits will include kids camps, high school sports teams having increased access, lifeguard and first responder training opportunities, and because I cannot emphasize this enough, we will continue to facilitate golf. Related to the commissioner questions, Commissioner Guzano, you did ask about a parking rate. We can confirm we are not proposing to charge for parking, so that would be the parking ratio established and not a fee for parking. Related to Commissioner Rosin's question on the lease status, it's my understanding the lease terminates in January of 2027, so less than a year and a half from now. Golf cart path, I do have, let's see. Shall we go back to the slide showing the pink path, or was that clearly visible to the commissioners? Fine, great, thank you. And then parking location, let me get to a better slide here. Bear with me one second, I apologize. Jocelyn, can you hit 26 and enter, please? Thank you. So the northerly parking lot along Irvine Avenue, that will be intended for employee parking and golf parking, and also surf parking. And then the more, the Mesa parking lot will also be available. So I think employees predominantly will be encouraged to park as far away as possible to free up the closed parking. And this is the side, if you can follow the tracker here, this is where the golf cart storage will be located. And so the carts will come out up here. This is the existing tunnel that goes underneath, so it seems to make a lot of sense to have golfers parking in this area of the parking lot. With that, I think that I have covered your questions. I appreciate your time tonight. We do request that the commission approve the project consistent with the staff recommendation, which would be to make a recommendation to the city council for their approval. I'm available for any questions that you have this evening, and again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you agree with the staff conditions?
Thank you, Chair Harris. Yes, we have reviewed the staff report. We have reviewed all of the conditions of approval. We also reviewed Mr. Mosher's thoughtful corrections of typos and some other inconsistencies that he noted. And in working with staff, we are in full agreement with all of those conditions.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, questions for the applicant? Commissioner Reed?
Thanks. I think it was on the fourth or fifth slide, but you had in there temporary restroom and starter as part of this project. Is that going to be temporary, or will that be permanent once the project's built?
Yes, I think that was slide three. What's? There we go. Temporary would refer to during construction operations. We have an interim plan. I apologize for that being imprecise. We also plan to have a starter once the clubhouse is constructed as well.
Got it, thank you.
Commissioner Rosin?
Just a quick question in regard to the concept of special events. And there's some, several conditions of approval that relay to special events, and the number 12 is what's been proposed. And I was wondering what the thought process was behind that?
Yes, we are proposing 12 special events per year. We were anticipating approximately one per month to spread that out. So that was the thinking behind 12, that it seemed like a good number.
Sounds to make sense, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
There was, and this question may be more of its applicant or staff, but there was a letter from one of the tribal nations, it was the Keys Nation, about the city's obligations for responding to their questions. And just want to know if someone can address our obligations and how they were met?
Thank you, Commissioner Guzano, members of the Planning Commission, Yolanda Summerhill with the City Attorney's Office. There are a number of tribes that are listed on the National American Heritage Commission's site. We did issue letters to, I believe, 20 tribes. And the premise is to make sure that as we are developing the project, that any sacred resources are protected throughout that process. So we did receive two different requests to consult from two different tribes. As Josh, Jocelyn mentioned, we do have mitigation members in, in place to ensure that during the construction process, you have an archaeologist on-site, and so that any resources that are encountered are properly cared for. I think there was a dispute, a question amongst those tribes as to whether one was appropriately affiliated, and we did not feel that it was appropriate for us to choose one tribe over the other, so we respectfully honored the obligations for both tribes.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
I have one question, sorry. Can you just update us on the back nine? What's the status of the county, and where does that stand? What does that look like? I know you, I believe the applicant, or you own?
Yes, absolutely.
A portion of, when you cross over?
Jocelyn, do you mind hitting 15, enter, please? Okay, so this is the back nine that is within the County of Orange's jurisdiction. It is under a separate lease. It's my understanding that lease has been month-to-month for quite a while, and that it would terminate in January of '27, along with the long-term ground lease for the main parcel.
Any communications with them, or do we know, or kind of waiting out this?
Yes, we have been in communication with the County of Orange. I believe that city staff also received emails from the county indicating the county's desire to retain this as golf in the long term.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Moving on to public comments. Okay, we have a lot of people tonight. Everyone that wants to speak, will you please raise your hand right now so we can get an idea of who intends to speak? Okay, thank you. If you intend to speak, are, if you're, if you're here on behalf of a group and you intend to speak on behalf of that group, will you please raise your hand? Okay, five. Okay, of those five, please keep those hands up. Sir, how many people are, how much time do you think you need? Typically, we have three minutes for an individual. Or how many people are you speaking for? Okay, three minutes. What about over here? Okay, three, three. Mr. Halleck? She wants nine? Okay. And then, sir? Just a minute? Okay. Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's fine. So, three, 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 nine for your council, okay? And then, just a minute in the back, okay? And then we have, so if you're not part of those groups, sorry, one more time, raise your hands if you're just speaking individually. Let's go. Thirteen, fourteen, okay. Fourteen. Okay, Yolanda Jaime, I mean, what, two minutes for everyone, or do you want to stick to three? Yeah, I'm inclined to say two for the individuals, and then grant the extra for the groups.
I think that's acceptable.
Is that acceptable? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Halleck, your council. Well, first, I'd like to, let's have them go first, but before that, we'd really like to request, request that everyone practice proper decorum, focus your comments on what is in front of us. This is all we are judging. We're not looking at what-ifs, what could happen down the line. It is what we have seen tonight and what's in our purview only, okay? So, please, try to keep it to what's at hand tonight. Please don't yell, clap, hoot-holler, you know, shout over anyone, curse, anything. If you yell on the mic, we'll have to cut you off, you know, if that, those natures or anything of that nature. And then, we'll have you form a line down the middle, and you kind of alternate on each, yes, sir?
Did I understand you to say that the three-minute allotment is reduced to two individual speakers?
So, we're not representing a group, correct? Would you like more, or are you representing a group?
No.
Okay.
Would like more.
Well, I mean, everything says three minutes.
So, folks, it is a hefty agenda. There are a number of people that are in the audience, so with that, we wanted to go ahead and ensure that there is adequate time, and two minutes is appropriate for the chair to allocate, to ensure the project is thoughtfully considered.
How many people want three minutes? Who? One, two. Look, we're going to stick with the original plan. If you're going over a little bit, I'll give you some leniency, and I'll try not to cut you off, but that's it, okay? We have a lot of people here, we need to move the meeting along, and we're giving up a lot of opportunity to groups here to speak, okay? Mr. Halleck, will you please have your council start, and then the group members follow, followed by individuals, and please alternate, state your name for the record.
My name is Cara Grant, and I am here on behalf of Save Newport Beach Golf Course and the Gabriela and Obana Mission Indians Kees Nation. SEQA documents are informational documents, as we all know. Their purpose is to inform the public of what's being considered and to accurately describe it so that when it's circulated for public comment, they can provide genuine, on-topic input for the Commission or the City Council to consider. In this case, this EIR has spread some misinformation that is significant, it's, in that it has misled the public regarding the project, the potential impacts on the environment, and whether those could or would be mitigated to a level that is below the threshold of State law requires the Planning Commission, the city, to recirculate the environmental impact report once these errors or misinformation is corrected, and submit for public comment again once those corrections have been made. The presentation asserted that there are no significant and unavoidable impacts. This is incorrect. Golf courses are known to be constructed or developed on Native American ancestral grounds. This is well documented, not just in California, but across the country. There's, for instance, Journey at Pechanga in Temecula, the Kohler Golf Course in Wisconsin. There were 126 bodies that were of Native American ancestry found in, within certain holes of a golf course in North Dakota. There are registered historical discoveries of Native American descent that are within a mile of this project. The possibility of human remains, or at minimum tribal cultural resources, being discovered in the mass amount of ground disturbing activity that's going to occur to develop this project is not just likely, it's probable. Beyond probable, it's almost a certainty. It was represented that, under AB 52, consultation was completed for this project. That's not quite correct. The Kees Nation submitted substantial evidence to support the significance of this project's site to the tribe, and made some proposals for conditions. In response, there was not a direct discussion on the proposed conditions that were proposed by the Kees Nation for this project. What the tribe learned thereafter was that the city had received information, or how it usually works is just a letter saying from a group purporting to be Native American of, hey, we want to, we want to monitor this project too. AB 52 requires that the government-to-government consultation be with the indigenous Native American tribe that accepts or the invitation to consult, once the invitations are sent to all of the tribes on the Native American Heritage Commission's contact list. It doesn't say that the city can implement, as part of their mitigation for the project under SEQA, a group that says, hey, we're Native American and we want to monitor too. That's not consultation. Consultation requires the lead agency to actually vet who the tribe is, who, or what their affiliation is with the area, what their culture is. The Native American Heritage Commission posts best practice guidelines on its website that lay out what the city's obligations are. This is of serious and significant concern for the integrity of the EIR, because what happens when, in the process of digging up to forty, or fifty feet below ground service, I understand, over these, this acreage, where unlike a normal project, there's digging, but they're not removing the entirety of all the soil within that space, like you would be for this project, for a fully encased pool, for lack of a better word, for the wave pool. The earth is going to be largely removed. Well, if human remains or tribal resources are found, the Kees Nation's cultural and ceremonial practice is to leave them in situ, in the ground. If that's not, should I continue? Oh, I'm sorry, was that nine minutes?
Nine.
Wow, that went fast. I'll wrap up there, but the, just quickly to close, the significance is, what happens when human remains are found? Where do we go from here? The odds are, there will be, and there's no mitigations that are currently even being discussed that would be sufficient to avoid that type of impact. In addition, this project, under the general plan...
I need to, I'm sorry, I need to cut you off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
I'll just go right in, in between the opposition. I represent, my name is Heather Cislak. I represent, I'm the Operations Director for Newport Bay Conservancy. It's so nice to see so many people active in the community. I represent Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends. We, we did submit a public comment for the draft EIR. Unfortunately, we didn't see our response, the response that the city gave to the draft EIR until today, so we didn't have a chance to really look at that because of the holiday weekend. But alas, we exclusively focus on the protection and preservation of Upper Newport Bay. It is one of the most precious natural resources we have, like our Pacific Ocean, that is natural and available to surf in. We restore a lot of native habitat, and what, that's one of our primary activities, bringing highly trained experts together, committed volunteers and the public, to make sure we remove these invasive plants and plant native plants. We also like to advocate for the residents and visitors from far and wide to enjoy this natural beauty. So, on behalf of an artificial surf lagoon that is not natural, we did voice three concerns that were also responded in the comments, but I did want to voice them in front of the Commission, too. We are concerned about surface runoff from the golf course. We saw in the plans that the proposed golf cart lane is going to be right next to the Delhi Channel, not within the retaining wall. But there was some other comments that we made, too. We also worry, were worried about the biological constraints, making sure that any major construction requires pre-construction surveys, and that it is done outside of nesting season. We also were, it is very apparent that there are going to be lots of palm trees and, from the plans, non-native vegetation, and I think some of the original plans called out Brazilian pepper tree, which the city spent millions of dollars in Phase 2 to remove, and we're removing more of that in Phase 3 in Big Canyon. So, I would strongly urge any plans to be done with drought-tolerant native landscaping instead. And in conclusion, we really would like to see a better pollutant load and runoff analysis, really make sure there's habitat replacement measures in place for avian species that would be more susceptible to native trees rather than non-native trees, and removing any highly priority invasives from this project. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And just, just one, oh, no, no, go ahead and come forward. Was there, who were the other group speakers as well, behind Mr. Halleck? Okay. And Mr. Halleck, what, three minutes is, okay, please, thank you. I just want to make sure we're staying on the groups. So, three for the groups, correct? And then, individual, and then behind gentleman in the red shirt, I believe, we start with individuals on two. Sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Benny Halleck. I am the volunteer chair of Save Newport Beach Golf Course and representative of over 7,500 of our community members that are against this project. That number is growing daily. 7,500 people in our area are against this project, not necessarily just because it's a wave pool or whatever, it's, it's a community beacon where we're at, the golf course and all that, and to remove three holes is kind of against golf. And I don't see how they can tout that they're going to have high school teams there, because they need to be PGA certified. PGA certified requires 18 holes. How can you have a youth sports program with 15, along with tournaments, charity tournaments that are held there? I'd also like to touch on the traffic patterns. I'd like to bring your attention to Measure S and double-check those numbers. You don't have to do it now, it's something you can just put in the back of your head. And then a restoration bond. If this project does go through and the wave park fails, is the landowner required to have a restoration bond to get it back to its natural habitat, or is it going to become houses? You know, you said not to bring up other stuff that's outside your purview, but that's in your purview. If this fails, as most do in the world, what's the next step? Are they going to put it back to its natural habitat? And I just, you know, in conclusion, I'd like to remind you that the community doesn't want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jim Oster, I, my family's been in the neighborhood since the early '70s. I've been playing golf at Newport Beach Golf Course for 42 years, own a home in the neighborhood. And I've been fighting to save the golf course since the owners put the South Parcel on the list for element housing, and Newport Beach City Council included the South Parcel for housing. I fought the first proposal for the Middle Parcel for drive shack. They withdrew due to financial issues. Then there was Top Golf, and now the surf park is essentially there as a scheme to make the golf course unviable. This application requires, commits to continuation of golf, but there is no long-term lease arrangement with the property owners. The property owners are still committed to developing housing, 692 units of high-density housing on the South Parcel. That parcel has not been removed from the certified list submitted to the state to meet the housing requirement. There's a contradiction. How can there be continuation of golf and have housing commitment on the same parcel? I have not received any response to my EIR comments. Another comment is, the project is dependent on solar panels for half of its energy, but those solar panels will interfere and cause glare to flight landing to John Wayne Airport. Obviously, solar panels are not suitable for that location. The other impacts that have not been examined by the EIR is the long-term situation for John Wayne Airport, which the runway is still planned to be extended at some point. The county owns the back nine to facilitate that runway extension, and the EIR, EIR does not consider if the runway is extended with the impact of both the surf park and the potential housing on the South, on the South Parcel. Those things need to be considered. There needs to be a commitment of the landowners for a long-term lease to, for the golf to continue on the South Parcel, which is lacking in this application, and some approval by the airport that this project will not interfere with expansion of John Wayne. In conclusion, the best and highest use of this property is continuation of it as a golf course. That's the only safe purpose for land adjoining the airport, and the landowners have committed to building that golf course and are committed to the public to maintaining it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Chair Harris and Commissioners. My name is Brian Meldstrom. I'm a 25-year teacher at Newport Harbor High School and current head surf coach and golf coach. I come before you tonight to voice my support for the development of Snug Harbor Surf Park. Being the surf coach, I represent the team in what I'm about to say tonight, but our surfers in general have the potential to become some of the best surfers, I believe, in the nation, but oftentimes struggle because we don't have the consistency in our training grounds to, to develop. We're limited by permits to where we can train on the beach, and those locations are in West Newport. Waves are typically fast, they're steep, they're inconsistent, non-conducive to high-level surfing development. Other schools that have world-class breaks, like Huntington Beach, San Clemente, Dana Hills, they're training in, in waters that are much more consistent, so we have, they have an edge on us. So, speaking selfishly as a high school team, the surf park could be a very big advantage to us. Our practices are often canceled due to flat conditions, weather, inconsistent waves, wind, unsafe surf. I would say 50% of the time, we're surfing, we're not surfing. We're either surfing or we're doing something else because the waves are not consistent enough to train. Snug Harbor, I... Snug Harbor, I believe, has the potential of flipping the script for our surfers at Newport Harbor High School, allowing them to train in a consistent setting, providing equal opportunity for all of the surfers on our team. You know, some of our surfers don't have the opportunity, they're not the high-level surfers which dominate the waves, so this will open up an even playing field for our surfers to develop. And I think the team will improve their skills and truly become the best surfing high school, not only in the country, but certainly in Newport Beach. Snug Harbor guarantees consistent waves, ensuring our young athletes have the tools to compete and represent our city proudly. Thanks for considering.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chair Harris, if I may just interrupt briefly. I believe that we did short Ms. Grant's about two and a half minutes, so I just wanted to offer that we provide that to her.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Grant at the end, if you'd like to come back up, if you want to be the last speaker, and you can button in. Does that work? Thank you. Yes, sir.
How's it going, Chair, commissioners? My name's Andy Cox. I am a lifeguard at Huntington State Beach. I've been there for 33 years, and I know that the Snug Harbor group has come and talked to lifeguard management at Newport Beach, Huntington City Beach, and Huntington State Beach regarding year-round training sites as far as rescues go, body searches, and all these different things where we don't have, as Mr. Meldstrom was saying before, we don't have a consistent way of going over things. If there was more consistency that is added to our training, it's just going to make it better. It's going to save lives, it's going to render us even better lifeguards, even better lifesavers. Having a controlled environment to train in with waves like this will save lives in Newport, in Huntington, absolutely. Additionally, I've read over everything, I've heard about everything, and it seems like this is the one way that the golf course does stay. It's been a while since I've been in Newport, but I have golfed there, I have hit the range, and it's a great place, but if you only get 15 holes, it's better than a parking lot for John Wayne or anything like that. We're hoping that this ends up bringing community together, bringing smiles to surfers, families, and locals, and keeping the golf course alive, and also helping selfishly the lifeguards save lives as best we can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Mike Smith. I urge you to please vote no on the Snug Harbor project and instead choose EIR alternative number one, known as no project, no build. By choosing alternative one, no general plan amendment, major site development review, conditional use permit, or modification permit would be needed. The city council would not have to override the findings of the Surf Park project being declared inconsistent by the Orange County Airport Land Use Commission on August 7. By choosing alternative one, there would be no impact to the current land use. There would be no potential impacts in mitigation for biological resources, cultural resources, and tribal-cultural resources due to no grounds being disturbed, and no massive excavating, and no major construction work would take place at the site. Alternative one would maintain the current open green recreation space for the benefit of the 250,000-plus people that currently golf and enjoy the driving range for a reasonable price. On August 28th, I sent an email to both the planning commission and the city council. I propose that the city purchase the golf course and turn it into a public municipal golf course. The benefits of doing this would be, one, help secure and protect the area from future airport expansion, preserve and maintain all current green open space and zoning as is, allow the more than 250,000 people of all ages and abilities to continue to use and enjoy the affordable 18-hole golf course and driving range as is, as it has been done since the Newport Beach Golf Course opened in 1976. It would stop a planned high-density housing project of 693 units on Mesa Drive at golf holes 3 through 8. It would also stop building in a known flood zone. It would stop a significant increase in traffic in the area that would otherwise surely result from building 693 units. The city could and should immediately withdraw golf holes 3 through 8 on Mesa from its residential overlay request with the California Coastal Commission. To the best of my knowledge, there is no lease or written operating agreement for continued use for operations and/or maintenance for golf holes 3 through 8 on Mesa with the applicant and the landowner.
Please finish your thought.
Thank you, appreciate it. To the best of my knowledge, the Back Bay Barrels and Surf Park is not working with the County of Orange in regards to a written agreement for future operations for golf holes 18 through, I'm sorry, 10 through 18, the Back Nine. Lastly, we all know the airport area has already taken on a major share of the city's new housing count, and the traffic in the airport area, especially on Irvine Avenue, Mesa Drive, Bristol, Jamboree and Bristol, will be horrible gridlock. This is destroying our city and creating major hardships for our citizens, and is dangerous for the general public. Please vote no on Surf Park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Linda Geet. Snug Harbor, please vote no on Snug Harbor Surf Park project. Snug Harbor plans state that only the center portion of the Newport Beach Golf Course will be replaced. The center portion contains the most important part of the golf course and is the absolute heart of what makes the golf course and interaction thrive. Newport Beach Golf Course provides an open and affordable recreation option for all ages and income levels. Snug Harbor will be a huge resort that will serve a niche demographic that can afford the six-figure membership fees and expensive public surfing rates. Replacing the golf course with a Surf Park would trade inclusive recreation for luxury amenity that serves a smaller, more specialized group. There are millions more golfers than surfers in the U.S., so it is mind-boggling that this project is being considered, especially since Newport Beach has some of the best beaches in Southern California. Additionally, losing the driving range is a significant blow since the driving range enhances the value and the appeal of the golf course, and it is an important aspect to learning and practicing golf. The only affordable public golf course in Newport Beach shouldn't be a target of elitist commercial venture that prioritizes profit by substituting a high-end resort over public recreational space. The Newport Beach Golf Course is an important community gathering space for veterans, retirees, and families. Carving up the golf course limits access and affordability to thousands of people in many communities in and around the Newport Beach that use it. Please vote no. Even though the center parcel is privately owned, Newport Beach already has abundant ocean surf, and the Surf Park's high fees and limited access would replace an exclusive public space with a private amenity. The golf course needs investment, not replacement. It is a community treasure and a valued resource that should be maintained for the future generations.
Thank you, Ms. Geet. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council chair, council members, city staff. My name is Todd Lerner. I'm a lifetime resident of the city of Newport Beach. I am a surfer and a golfer, and been practicing urban planning and architectural design for over 30 years and even taught at USC. I'm 100% support of this wave pool and the venture that's going on here, and this is a very polarizing item and topic. Over my career, I've been involved in golf course design, golf course redesign. I've also been involved in wave pool design and wave pool redesign, and they both have positives and they both have negatives. And hearing people speak, everyone's very passionate, and I agree with some of the statements that, yes, Newport Beach does have world-class beaches. Been all over the world, seen them all, they're fantastic, but the waves are C+ at best. I was fortunate enough to be in a meeting and hear a presentation with Kelly Slater talk about the same type of thing with his wave technology that he's trying to do, and he put it very simply. Your average session is about two hours. Each wave is about 3 to 7 seconds long. You catch, you try to catch anywhere from 15 to 20 waves, you might catch five, maybe 10 to 15. Maybe one of those is memorable. You start extrapolating that over a week, over a month, over a year, and you factor in conditions, you factor in tide, you factor in everything else, and you might have two to five great waves a year, right, that you remember. Snug, every wave is 20 seconds long at minimum or average, and then each wave is absolutely perfect. I've traveled all over the world on surf trips and been sitting there and skunked for four or five days and you get nothing. This is unlike skiing, where you can't predict base, where you can't predict weather, you can't predict the surf when you go to these different places. And so, that's what I think, you know, what Snug Harbor is going to provide is that world-class surf experience. The other thing that is really important that this is brought up and the lifeguard talked about earlier is also that the wave is going to be safer than out in the ocean. You minimize localism. Usually, the localism is exercised by people who have not been born and raised in Newport and don't get what the vibe is for Newport. Lifeguards on the water at all times. In closing, please support this project.
Thank you.
But ladies and gentlemen, I just want to make something really clear for everybody. We are a planning commission, so we make decisions upon the technical analysis as brought before us with this application. Whether you like surfing, don't like surfing, like golf, don't like golf, good beaches, bad beaches, there's an application in front of us. We have to analyze the technical surroundings of the application from the EIR and all the way down, so I implore you to keep that in mind. We appreciate your sentiment and like for the water, the golf, and everything else, but we implore you to talk to us about the technical aspects of this, the application in front of us. That has nothing to do with housing or anything else. This is an application about land use. That's what we're evaluating, and I implore you all to keep that in mind again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman and commissioners, my name's Maureen Flanagan. I'm a 19-year resident of Newport Beach, and I live fairly close to that golf course. I drive by there every single day, and I am totally against having the Surf Park. I think it's unnecessary here. I also would not like to have 18-foot walls all around Mesa as we drive by there, and I'm very concerned about having property where you're having 20 places where people can stay overnight. I think it will be a detriment to the city. For those of us who live around there, we are very much against it because of the traffic that we're dealing with right now, and it will be worse. I think the other gentleman talked about all of the building that's going around there as well. I go down Mesa every day. It's backed up right now. I can't imagine what it would be like with an entrance to Snug Harbor, so I implore you to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, how's it going? My name is Tyler Gunter. I'm a pro surfer, born and raised here in Newport Beach. I'm a current resident on the Newport Beach Peninsula, and I'm lucky enough to run the Newport Jetty Classic, which is a surf contest held every year here in Newport at 56th Street. Benefits Ben Carlson Foundation, we're going under our sixth year of it. Surfing is a huge part of what makes Newport the city we love, and I know Snug Harbor will be a huge driver in growing that community. Newport can be a hard place to learn how to surf. I've actually taught people who have never been in the ocean before, and it can get pretty tricky with all of that external variables going on, aside from you and the board. Plus, I love surfing 56th Street, but Newport goes through lulls that makes training hard for the pros, too. I was just recently in Virginia Beach surfing this technology, the Wave Garden technology, while I was out there for a World Surf League event, and the technology is amazing. I think what it'll do for our community, for the next generation of surfers coming up, and allowing them to train and be the best in the world, it's just going to be amazing. And just from beginners to pro-level surfers, it's going to make everybody a lot more comfortable in the water, it's going to make it a safer place. The events and everything that take place will be awesome, so, thank you. I hope you vote yes for Snug Harbor.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Gary McKee. I've lived in Newport Beach for 40 years as a homeowner, and I've been in the Newport Mesa area for 60 years. I strongly object to the Snug Harbor project. It's really, it's not about surf, it's not about golf. It's just a developer getting a hold of public-accessible open space and replace it with restricted-access development. However, to your comment, Mr. Elmore, of immediate concern is that the project site abuts the flood control channel, and that empties into the Upper Newport Bay State Marine Conservation Area. So, any loss of containment on-site of the waters therein goes right into that area. And it's an area that the state and private citizens have worked for decades to protect and conserve. In the applicant's mitigation monitoring and reporting program, I did not see this risk addressed, nor did I see it addressed in the synopsis of the EIR. So, if there's any contamination of the Upper Newport Bay by this project, that could result in state and/or federal prosecution. So, I urge you and the commissioners to reject this resolution. I have a copy of my comments directed to you, Mr. Harris. Can I give it to you, or, I see your secretary's not here, but...
You can give it to staff if you'd like, or if you already sent it, we did receive it.
No, I have not sent it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right. Thank you. All right, so I'm just happy there's a dude after me because I didn't want to close this down, but my name is Drew Lorenson. I was born and raised in Newport Beach. I'm a retired Army officer after 22 years of service. I can't begin to tell you how much I support the Snug Harbor project. I know there's been a bunch of discussions and videos of veterans want golf, this and that, or this or that. I can't speak for all veterans, but I'll speak for myself. First off, in my 59 months of being deployed in the Middle East, and in the warmest of weather, my NCOs, my soldiers, and myself would discuss what we were going to do once we got back. I assure you, golf never crossed that, but it was always, let's get to a beach, let's get to the water, let's get on a board, let's have a drink in hand, perhaps, but, you know, all these Third World countries, there wasn't a lot redeeming about them, so you could, I guess you could say it was kind of like LA, in my opinion. But when we did finally get back, the first place we headed was to the beach or to a Surf Park, or in Colorado, they had a wave pool up there. So, you know, spending money to chase a white ball on 15 holes or 18 holes, you know, that's one thing. It's not like we're taking three holes away from Augusta National, it's Newport Beach Golf Course. 15 holes is going to be good enough, and we're also going to have surfing there, and it's going to bring together, you know, the best of both worlds, in my opinion. So, you know, one thing I would like to say is I've seen stuff where American Legion Post 291, whether it's the Sons or Legionnaires, have been in support or against this. In my opinion, for those that are listening right now, I think that anything affiliated with Post 291 needs to immediately stop either for or against this because that goes against our 501(c)(3) status. So, in closing, I support the Snug Harbor initiative, support golf, if that's your thing, and the Snug Harbor gives us the both the best of opportunities, and I believe that trying to put a veteran in, they want golf or they want surfing, we just can't do that. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, commissioners. My name's Wade Womack. Please deny the Surf Park project as it's not consistent with the city code, and it will break up the John Wayne Golf Course, which will lead to expansion of John Wayne Airport and a lower quality of life for all of us in Newport, your residents. I'm a 30-year resident. Municipal Code 29, I'm sorry, 20.90.050. This SP7 district is established to ensure the long-term use and viability of the Newport Beach Golf Course. I think we all know that this will break up the golf course. We all know that in our hearts. There's no leases signed or anything, but I don't think these are hard conditions of the permit or the approval. So, I'd like to read a quote from former Mayor Diane Dixon, Daily Pilot, February 24, 2016. "The golf course is an important amenity for the long, for the region, as well as providing an important buffer against efforts that would expand existing runways on John Wayne Airport. It has always been important for our community that the airport remains within the footprint that it exists today." So, let's not kid ourselves. You're here to look out for the citizens. This is going to lead to more planes, more parking, and a lower quality of life for the residents whom you serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Gallagher. I'm a 26-year resident in Newport Beach. I'm also an adjacent property owner... I'm also an adjacent property owner at the Ranch Shopping Center across the street. I, I look at Newport Beach as a world-class community with, with a culture of recreation built into its fabric. And I think when you look at the plan that's proposed tonight, we have the best of both worlds. We're maintaining the golf. It's not, it's not, you know, all 18 holes, but it is 15 holes. And we're also opening up a recreational activity for our youth that I think is starving for something to do. And this is something that's great for all ages, all sexes. Everybody can come around this surf park. It's going to truly be world-class, and I think a gem that this city has for the next 25 years, and something that we're all proud of. And I think when you look at the reality of this, we have leases expiring. So there is going to be a change here, whether people want to acknowledge that or not. And when you think about what's been proposed, they've cut no corners. You can look at wave pools all over the world. This is probably the nicest wave pool in the world, bar none, and we have the opportunity to have it in our backyard. I think that's something to really think about, and think about the next 25 years of a culture that we have around fitness and recreation and all of the different opportunities this opens up for our youth and everybody else here to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Chair Harris, my name's Sean McCarron. I'm a long-term resident here in Newport Beach. I live right over by Mariners Elementary School, so I drive by the site feels like four or five times a day. I'm here to voice my support for the surf park concept here. I think it's an incredible use that matches really the fabric of our community. Newport boasts some incredible assets in the harbor, the beaches, the parks, the dining, the shopping. This will be something else that everybody can look to and say that they're proud of. The surf park will be a first for Orange County or LA County, and I think it's important, the first one, and I think will be successful. And not to echo the same sentiment as the prior speaker, but I'm also realistic about this. When the long-term ground lease comes up and expires, and an owner looks for highest and best use, a surf park ranks really high among those potential uses, and I think it trumps a lot of the other uses. So I support this wholeheartedly, and I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Katitza Sheehan, and I've been a resident of Newport Beach since 1970, and I just don't think this is the right project for this space. It is in a minor commercial area, residential area. I just think the impact for that residential area is not environmentally friendly and neighborhood-friendly. The presenter was saying it would be the sound of waves crashing. Well, that's waves crashing from 6:00 AM till 10:00 PM next to somebody's home. I don't know that they want that. If they wanted to live there, they might be living on the peninsula. And I just think it's also more of an elite project. It, the, we have no public golf courses in our area. It's the only public golf course. It opens itself to use from five-year-olds to 80-plus-year-olds. I don't think any 80-year-olds or very few would be surfing. So I think it's not a project that serves the community as a whole well, and I think we need to keep it as a golfed course, and a surf park might be served better in another area. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Bill Lyon. I'm a Newport Beach resident, and it's really hard to know without looking at a financial analysis what the viability of this project is. So we're taking out a driving range which is extremely viable, seven days a week. It's, you know, crowded. It's, it's, you know, well-attended. Someone talked about Kelly Slater Surf Park in the Central Valley. That's between $400 and $500 per wave. Now, maybe the cost, we can bring the cost down, although I think the operating expenses in Newport have got to be more than what it is in the Central Valley. So I question the financial, replacing a very financially viable operation with something that, again, there was no presentation on the financial viability. And if it's not viable, then the city's stuck with, you know, this development that's, you know, it's got to be expensive to redevelop. Someone had talked about, do you, you know, what do you do with it? I just, I question it, and I'm surprised there was no mention of financial viability. I mean, I'd love to see the plan because I'd love to just make sure that, you know, I understand what happens Monday through Friday when school's in session, you know, what happens in the winter, what happens in the springs. What are their financial assumptions to make this a viable go? So didn't see it tonight. I hope someone looks at that, and really with a, you know, an eye towards what's best for the city in terms of replacing a very financially viable operation with something that is unknown, which has competition three miles away that's free. Other surf parks in the, in the country don't have that competition. So again, it's really hard to know what's going on here without looking at that financial plan and viability. So I challenge the owner, the ownership of this group to present that to the community.
Sir, please address us. Sir, please address us.
Oh, sorry. But I would challenge the leadership group to present that to the community. Let the community take a look.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Mandy McDonald. Good evening, Mr. Elmore. I wanted to make sure that we had a non-surfer represented in support of Snug Harbor's project tonight. I grew up sailing in Newport Beach with Mr. Elmore. Sailing has been my passion for many years, and without the risk of talking about our, our culture and interests in, in the sports that we're interested in and more of the project. I was the boating director for the city for five years and helped develop the Marina Park Project, which had a lot of opposition. The Marina Park Project, I believe, ended up being a resounding success, although that is a city project, and we're talking about a private project. What I remember the most is having a really cool place to go and enjoy recreation while also being open to the public. This will have memberships, but also be open to the public. I have three children. I own surfboards. I spend very little time in the ocean because of time and parking and blackball and all kinds of things. My children and I are very much looking forward to this project. We want to go enjoy all of the amenities. I believe it's an incredible replacement for what we have there now. If we're talking about my resume, I also was a cart girl at Pelican Hill. Beautiful golf course. I'm a big fan of golf. That was a very fun job. I believe that this project has been very well thought through from, from start to end. It's going to be an incredible place for all of us to visit, and not just surf, but just enjoy a really cool place to recreate in Newport Beach. So I hope you support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Ken Sanford. I moved to Newport in 1967, prior to being drafted and going to Vietnam. And I'm speaking on behalf of the elderly people that have used the golf course for fundraising, especially Benny Hala has been really good to help veterans and older people that can't really afford the high-end stuff, and we don't surf anymore. And we don't mind taking our kids to the beach. We've been doing that for years. But having that green area and having it undisturbed from pollution or going to Indian artifacts makes a lot of sense to me. So I'm against it all the way, but thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bettina Eastman. I wasn't planning on speaking this evening because of the hundreds of letters that you received in opposition to this, so please forgive me if I misspeak. I'm a wildlife biologist, and I'm very concerned about the EIR and its limited scope of some of the evaluations for runoff of your 16-foot plant wall into the Delhi Channel. That'll bring pollutants and other potential invasive plants and those types of things that will run into Upper Newport Bay, as was mentioned earlier. Another one of my concerns is for the relocation of the bats that were mentioned. Nothing was mentioned on how that relocation will take place and where those bats will be expected to go. The other thing I'd really like you to consider is by changing the plan or the CUP, that will affect other projects. And you may be thinking that a 50-foot building isn't such a big expansion from an 18-foot building, but that is not consistent with an open space area as opposed to a commercial area. So there is a difference there. The plantings also are nowhere specified, and we certainly shouldn't be highlighting a species of plant as a feature from another part of the world. So that would be inconsistent for our wildlife as well. There's so many things that weren't at all listed, the runoff into the Delhi. There's just a lot that you really should be considering about this project that have not been addressed in the EIR. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Mosher?
Chair Harris, members of the planning commission, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, I wanted to thank the applicant for suggesting that they were going to work with the city staff to clean up the resolution. I wanted to clarify that because there was a 5 o'clock deadline yesterday for submitting comments, I actually did not read the resolution, and I did not read many of the conditions of approval. I just read some of them and found many errors. So I suspect they will find many errors in the resolution itself. Regarding the staff report, if you remember back to the beginning of this hearing, you heard a very long litany of city rules and regulations that the application was said to be consistent with. I find it remarkable that staff did not uncover a single city rule or regulation, that there might be some doubt about the consistency. Like the last speaker, I have some doubt myself about the consistency of this with the land use designation. The land is designated. It is preserved according to our land use plan and the zoning of this for outdoor recreation. And admittedly, it allows building construction that is accessory to that, but going from 10,000 square feet or so of supporting structure to 80,000 square feet, that seems like an awful lot of accessory development to support a lot of indoor use to support outdoor use, and particularly, and includes visitor accommodations overnight, which would normally go in a totally different kind of land use designation. So I think there should be some reasonable doubt about that. Also, I would like to speak to the letter from the airport, which was received last night. One of their concerns was the number of people that would be gathering in that area, and I think there was some confusion. They said at the airport land use commission meeting that they heard up to 1,500 or more people would be there at one time. You have a condition of approval, number 102, limiting the daily occupancy to about that number, but I think that's talking about daily occupancy rather than the number at a particular time. On the other hand, you have conditions for special events, those that are going to be once a month, and those are allowed up to, I don't know, 5,000, 10,000 people a day at two different levels. The level two allows, I think, 2,500, 5,000 a day. The point, point is, I am not sure what actually the number that will be there at any one time will be. We heard in the staff report, it would be like 388 at one time. I don't know how that compares to the current one. I don't know how many would be there during the special events. Long and short of that comment, shouldn't there be a condition of approval limiting how many people can be there at one time? Because that's a major concern at the airport. And then finally, if I could mention, the retaining walls next to the flood channel, has the flood district been asked about whether that has anything affecting their design? Did they assume that there would be a golf course next to that, not retaining walls? Has that question been asked? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Okay, Ms. Grant, would you like, are there any other speakers? Thank you. Ms. Grant, would you allow to finish two and a half minutes, please?
Thank you.
Okay. Just briefly, with respect to the tribal cultural resource mitigation measures, they improperly defer mitigation to a future date, which violates Public Resources Code Section 21081.6. The SEQA guidelines, 15126.4. You can also see Communities for Better Environment versus City of Richmond. Mitigation measures cannot defer the mitigation and to a future date or formulation. It has to be enforceable upon adoption. These fail to do that. They also state that an archaeologist will be doing the mitigation or the monitoring of the ground disturbance, so to ensure that there's no impact on tribal resources or ancestral remains. This violates SEQA, Tribal Cultural Resources, its own mitigation, or, I'm sorry, its own element for consideration. An archaeologist is not the quote expert under SEQA that's sufficient to remediate or mitigate those impacts. The consultation required by AB 52 did not occur in violation of Coination versus City of Clear Lake. The, I'm sorry, the intent to override the Airport Land Use Commission inconsistency finding is a serious concern for what appears to be a disregard for safety. The, in addition, there's also the project under the land use of open space and recreation. When this is a membership-based facility, at least in part, does not serve the purpose and intent or goals of the open space recreation land use designation. We would ask as a testament of the city's good faith that they insist on going forward with approving this project despite the issues that were raised, not just by myself, but all the other members of the public that commented today and in writing previously, that the city includes the condition that it retains liability for the success and safety of the project, or post a bond to cover the potential environmental impacts of the project. This is authorized under Government Code Section 815.6, Public Resources Code 1508, I'm sorry, 1509.21081.6 and 21082.1, along with Friends of Mammoth versus Board of Supervisors and Sunstrom versus County of Mendocino.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you all for your time and participation. Does the applicant want to respond to any of the comments raised?
Thank you, Chair Harris, Shawna Schaffner, representing the applicant. I think that there are a lot of questions, or, excuse me, there have been a couple of questions that I think are best clarified by city staff and perhaps also the city's SEQA consultant. I would like to address two things quickly that were related to the Airport Land Use Commission. One was the suggestion that the solar canopies will create a glare issue. If you review the EIR, appendix N is a Nancy, is the solar glare analysis that was submitted to the Airport Land Use Commission, and there were no inconsistency findings related to the solar canopies. So I think that issue has been dispatched of. Related to Mr. Mosher's comments on occupancy, I would like to direct you to the trip generation analysis, which is contained in the staff report, and I'm going to give you a page number if you bear with me for one second. The total daily attendance is estimated to be 1,400 people with 70 staff members. Let me get to the page. It's at the very back of the report. Handwritten, page 171. If you would go there, you will see several tables. Highlighted is the average peak per day, which is anticipated to be 388 people at the highest peak per day. If we look at the airport land use zones, I don't think we need to pull up my staff report, but you'll recall there was Zone 2, there was Zone 4 and Zone 6. Zone 2 allows for hundreds of people per acre, even though it is the most restrictive zone. In Zone 2, we estimate that we have maybe 50. In Zone 4, we estimate 110 people, and in Zone 6, we estimate 450 people, where over 1,000 would be allowed in that zone. So we do think that there is evidence in the record that we are consistent with the AELUP as it relates to the override. With that, I would... With that, I would appreciate the opportunity to answer any more questions the commission has, but I think it's best if staff can answer questions related to SEQA and also the city's SEQA consultant.
Thank you. Any other questions or anything? Clarifications?
On the solar glare, you had mentioned the AP LUC, kind of review and approval of the glare study, but I believe there was also approval from the FAA. Is that correct as well?
Yes. Thank you for that question, Commissioner Guzano. The appropriate 7460 forms were submitted to the FAA, and those came back with no hazard to air navigation. So that includes all points of construction, the lights, the nightlights, the 50-foot tall building, the overnight accommodations, the solar canopies. All of those points were submitted to the FAA, and there is a no-hazard determination for each of those points.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, any comments, any clarifications?
Thank you, Chair Harris and members of the Planning Commission. In response to Ms. Grant's allegations as it pertains to SEQA, we did provide comprehensive response to comments that the SEQA consultant can opine on, but I did want to highlight that the city attorney's office did have a continued dialogue with KIS Nation, including a June 23, 2025 correspondence from our office, and that was sent at that time. We did receive a letter from, or a correspondence from Mr. Chair Solis saying that they did not receive it. We did resend that today. But just to highlight the features of what that letter indicated, it did indicate that the city was not complying with AB 52 as well as SB 18. And really, the crux of the arguments that we had there was that the city should not consider Tongva as an appropriate tribe to consult with. We, as I'd mentioned previously, they are listed as a tribe on the Native American Heritage Commission's list. They do have affiliations with the area. You know, we talk about this Coin Nation case. I heard that mentioned here, and part of the features there was that the city was not sensitive to some of the tribe's issues here, and so I think it would be extremely insensitive for the city here to take one tribe's side over the other, and so we refuted that. We do have mitigation measures that are incorporated in here that respect both tribes' rights, and if Ms. Grant has additional mitigation measures that she would like to propose that would, excuse me, that would honor and respect her tribe's as well as the other tribe's rights, we would be happy to incorporate those in there. I did hear that the city was not compliant with the tribal consultation process as it pertains to those discussions. We have a comprehensive list dating back to September 19, 2024, where the city initially sent the tribal consultation notice out, and I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 different pieces of dialogue that have taken place throughout that time. So we will be sure to incorporate that into the record. I don't want to bore you with the details of that, but I can assure you that I feel very confident that the city complied with the tribal consultation timeline process. And if I've missed anything there, I'm happy to have the SEQA consultant fill those gaps. Thank you.
Any other comments for the record?
And just want to add that, you know, the project does include responsive comments. There is a total of 188 comment letters that were responded to that are included in the staff report and the draft EIR. In addition, we received a number of comments that were submitted with SEQA-related comments, but outside our comment period, that our SEQA consultant did go ahead and draft more detailed responses to. Those 27 additional letters were included in the additional correspondence that was distributed today. But if the commission would like, our SEQA consultant is available just to directly respond to some of the comments related to hydrology and water quality, if you'd like.
Any questions?
Yeah, just one final question on the Native American. There are two monitors that will be answered, one from each tribe, correct?
That's correct.
Commissioners, any clarification you want on the EIR from Representative? Thank you so much. Oh, yeah, so.
Yeah, I'd love to hear a little bit more about the runoff potential into the flood control channel from the retaining walls and/or the release of water from the pools.
Through the chair, is it okay if I address this comment?
Sure.
Thank you, only because I had it up and I forgot to address it earlier, so I appreciate that. If we look at the water quality management plan that is included as an appendix to the EIR, it notes that the site currently drains and discharges into the Santa Ana-Delhi Channel. Under the proposed condition, the runoff from the project will be separated into 13 drainage management areas, all of which will be treated, retained on-site to the most part before it is released into the storm drain system. So the water quality management plan details how water will be dealt with specifically in the area of the Delhi Channel. I think additionally, well, how about that? I'll leave it there unless there are further questions.
Well, to clarify, you're saying currently it runs straight through, and now you're going to capture on-site?
Yes, in, yeah, 13 different areas.
Other questions or anything for? Okay, thank you. Anything else, staff, we're good? Okay. All right, I'll close the public hearing and bring this back up to the commission for discussion and action. Commissioners, any general comments or motions?
Happy to kick this off. It's great to see everybody in the city that is voicing their opinion. I appreciate that. I think it's remarkable that we have a city that has so many people that are involved, vested in care, both sides. It's great. Whether this project is good or bad, like it, don't like it, financial analysis, apartments, all that, this body doesn't opine on this. We're making a recommendation to city council. Lot of those feelings, opinions, and everything else, to the extent that this is approved and moves forward, please voice that to the city council. Light them up, hit them up as much as you can. That's why you voted for them, and that's why they're there. Again, you know, and the housing stuff and everything else and the parking, that's, you know, you have a governor that has dictated that. So we're here to opine on this application. The application is put in front of us. We have a process. It's a great process. Everyone has had their say. Very proud of that. I find the application to be consistent with the code. I find staff's interpretation of the application to be consistent. I can make the findings, and I will be supporting this, I will be supporting this based upon what our job description is, and I think we're doing our job doing so.
Thank you. Commissioners, resume.
I'm going to echo all of those statements. You know, we're looking at a land use from an applicant that's provided us with detailed information that we can make the findings or I can make the findings on. This still preserves golf. It adds a new, unique experience. So I'm going to support this application, and I can make the findings, and I'd like to make a motion, if I may, to approve, or, and I guess we need to include some of Mr. Mosher's edits, and to approve this application for approval for, recommendation for approval to city council.
I'll second that.
Can I say anything?
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations to the applicant. Next item, staff and commissioner items. Item number three, motions for consideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? None? See, none. Item number four, the report by the Community Development Director, a request for matters which a Planning Commission member would like placed on a future agenda. I don't know if you want to give it a moment or? Please exit and continue conversations outside the doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So just a quick update, and it's a long night. For the next Planning Commission meeting on September 18, we do have three items. One item is a housing project that's been brought forth under the housing overlay, and that's for an 89-unit townhome project over on Monrovia Avenue. We have a restaurant use permit to legalize or make permanent temporary outdoor patio for Soul Cachina Restaurant, and then the appeal of a staff approval for the fire station number one and library project on the peninsula. So those are three items for your next agenda, and that's all I have for you.
Thank you. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on these items? See, none. Item, request for excused absences. Anyone? Commissioners? Everyone's back in school. Okay. Thank you.